Testing. Oh, it works. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for October 7th, 2025. I would like to recognize Robert Seaver, Township Attorney, Jonathan Palin, Township Planner, Stephanie Osborne, and Ava Miller from Giffords Webster. And if you would all please silence your phones, I would like to also acknowledge the folks out in the audience. Silence your phones and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible.
Sorry about that. I'd like to do roll call. We have Rick LaBelle.
Here.
Kathy Bosberg. Richard Brokhardt.
Here.
Brian Carr.
Here.
Ralph Jaworski.
Here.
James Klonowski.
Here.
Mark Renaud.
Here.
Eric Hyder.
Here.
And Carl Leonard is here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd. We have a motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Mark Renaud, to approve the minutes from September 2nd. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as submitted.
I'll support that.
Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Rick LaBelle, to approve tonight's agenda as submitted. Any comments or questions from the board? None mentioned? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We do have public comments from the audience. If anybody would like to come up, talk about anything at all, you have three minutes. More than welcome to come up. No? Okay. Tonight, we have one public hearing. And I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. I'm sorry, who's supported? Motion to open the public hearing by Carl Leonard, supported by Kathy Bosberg, rezoning number 376. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. With that, if, not sure if Ava or would you like to? Let me just start this part and then we'll have you come in. So this is requesting to rezonate 1.45 acres of property located on the north side of Jefferson Avenue between Lake Point Avenue and Riverpoint Avenue from C1 Local Commercial to MX1 Jefferson Mixed Use. Parcel ID number 150927201002 The addresses are 48825 and 48891. With that, we'll have Ava Miller. Ava Miller, tell us about it.
All right, thank you. All right. So first, the Planning Commission is tasked today for the rezoning with making a recommendation to the Township Board as to whether or not approve this rezoning. Looking at our review letter dated September 29th, we'll start on page two at existing conditions. The subject parcels are both currently zoned C1 Local Commercial. The applicant is seeking to rezon the entirety of the parcels from C1 to MX1 Jefferson Mixed Use for the purpose of constructing eight attached dwellings. And looking at the adjacent properties, to the north and west are exclusively one-family homes zoned R1B One Family Residential. East of the subject site are parcels zoned C1 Local Commercial, and farther north is zoned R1B. These parcels currently have one-family homes and a restaurant. And to the south of the site, south of Jefferson Avenue, is zoned WF, the waterfront district. And these parcels currently have a restaurant and repair shops. Looking at the bottom of page three, we'll go over the 10 questions you consider for the possible zoning map amendment. First question, is the proposed zoning consistent with the master plan? The master plan's future land use map designates this site as local commercial, along with the parcels to the east and west of the site. To the immediate north, it's designated as medium-density single-family residential. And the south side of Jefferson Avenue is designated as mixed use. The master plan describes the local commercial land use designation as having activities that consist of uses intending to primarily meet the daily retail and service needs of nearby residential neighborhoods. This location is also called out in the master plan as being a part of the old Jefferson mixed-used area. The township envisions this area as a small-scale, mixed-use waterfront district that would provide commercial opportunities and cater to local residents and seasonal users, with opportunities for housing included where appropriate. This area is also in close proximity to the planned Salt River Nature Center, and any development in this area should consider a low-impact, non-motorized connection to this future trail system to the north, other pedestrian amenities, and also historic markers noting the cultural and historic importance of the corridor. The future residential density plan shows this site and cites the east and west as proposed to have a housing density of 2.2 to 3.4 dwelling units per acre. And south of Jefferson Avenue is the MX1 District, where no range or maximum density is provided on this density plan map. However, 5.4 dwelling units are permitted per acre in this district, given the 8,000 square foot minimum lot area. What other impacts would the requested zoning have on public services, utilities, and natural features? The site has access to water and sewer connections. And then, identified on a map in the report, hydro soils are present in the northeast corner of the site, and most of the site is designated with a 0.2% annual chance flood hazard, with areas on the edge of the site designated with a 1% flood hazard. Has the applicant provided evidence that the property cannot be developed or used as zoned? They've not provided any evidence. However, the rezoning is necessary for the developer to be able to propose any multifamily housing. The only residential type of use that is permitted in the C1 zoning is single-family residential, so the rezoning would be necessary. Is it compatible with surrounding uses? While MX1 is not in any nearby parcels, this zoning district can be used as a transition from the existing single-family dwellings to the busy roadway of Jefferson Avenue and the higher-intensity uses found across the street in the waterfront district, and possibly be seen as an extension of the mixed-use district area that is envisioned by the master plan? Will it place a burden on nearby thoroughfares? The burden is likely to be the same in the MX1 District compared to what could be developed in the C1 District, but a full traffic study would be needed. While the applicant has provided a plan for residential dwellings, this would likely be, which would be less intensive than commercial uses, it should also be noted that this is a straight rezoning request, and any of the uses listed in the MX1 District would be permitted if the property is rezoned. Other land currently available for this use? There appears to be two vacant MX1 parcels further southwest down Jefferson from the proposed site, along with some parcels zoned RM3 Multiple Family Residential further west along Jefferson and 21 Mile Road. Will the development of the site be able to meet zoning district requirements? The applicant provided a concept sketch of the site, but a complete site plan would be required to determine full compliance, which will be required as part of the site plan review process. Is rezoning the best way to address this request in general? The request for rezoning is the most appropriate way to permit the proposed use of the site, as opposed to amending the C1 District to allow attached residential dwellings. Has there been a change in circumstances? The subject property has not had any development proposals since the master plan was adopted. And then, is the rezoning request consistent with the master plan for the area? It is not consistent with some aspects of the future land use designation of local commercial. The local commercial area was envisioned to have uses intended primarily to meet the daily retail and service needs of nearby residential neighborhoods, and does not mention any residential uses. However, the MX1 District aligns with the mixed-use area on the future land use map in the master plan, which envisions this area as a small-scale, mixed-used waterfront district that would provide commercial opportunities that would cater to local residents and seasonal users alike, with opportunities for housing included where appropriate. The uses permitted in the MX1 District expand beyond local commercial in that it allows for more intense uses, such as higher-density residential dining, restaurants, and outdoor dining. It is important to note also that boundaries on the future land use map are not parcel-specific, but general areas. If rezoned, the request would not be a continuous extension of any of the existing zoning surrounding the site. There are some MX1 parcels further southwest along Jefferson, but not on any parcels in the vicinity. The MX1 District is a new district, and the vision laid out in the master plan is for the parcels directly south of the site to be zoned MX1, or of a similar zoning classification. And then, would approving the request grant a special benefit to a property owner or developer that the Planning Commission should review and consider whether or not this applies? And then that will be all for my point.
Thank you. So with that, is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to come up and state your name and information, address, and what you're looking to do?
There's a button down below there to turn on the microphone. There you go. My name is Frank Manani. I work as Regina Building Company. And I'm looking to rezon this property to make better use of it. I've been aware that I could use it to build four residential lots, but I thought we could do, possibly do more with it. More than that, I don't know what, I can answer your questions.
Is that all you have for us right now?
Yeah.
Okay. If you want to take a seat, we're going to open it up to the public and see if they have any, any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the public like to come up?
Hi, Linda Hartman. I just like to know his vision, because it sounds fine, mixed use where it's going. But he said he'd like to do something more with it, but he doesn't explain what. So I think your board, as well as the public, would be interested in what that vision is. That's all I ask.
Thank you. Linda, could you shut the button there, please? There's a button on the lower right. If you could just, thank you, thank you very much. And sir, when you come up, state your name and turn it on and off when you're done. Thank you.
My name is Mark Odom. I live on Baker Road. It seems to me that we're looking at doing developments without really any kind of plan. I mean, there's a development going on behind me that they kind of had a road plan, but that looks like it's been tossed out the window right now. And it seems, it seems to make sense that maybe some of the engineering and some of the drawings and things like that should be done before it comes to the Planning Commission. And that way, you've got something to look at. And you had something where you had to go to the zoning. Well, we're going to approve it, but you've got to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get, you know, you know, a zoning change. I mean, this is, everybody's doing things backwards. It's, they're just trying to rush up here and kind of force you guys into making a decision. And sometimes, sometimes I agree with the decision, sometimes I don't. But, you know, in the case of this, you've got really nothing to look at other than a piece of property that you drive by Jefferson on and look at and go, okay, well, something's going to happen there, but who knows what? And I just think you need to make the people that are going to be presenting to the Planning Commission have a little bit more information for the Planning Commission ahead of time, if they're really serious about doing it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? No one else? Seeing as that no one else wants to come up, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Rick LaBelle, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll bring it back up to the board, and we'll start with Kathy Bosberg. Okay, thank you. Eric Hyder?
Mr. Manani, I've got a couple of questions, if you'd like to come up to them. Looks like you're proposing a condo, an attached condo complex somewhat?
Two four-unit buildings.
Okay. A single-story, two-story type of scenario? Don't know yet?
I don't know. We, we're just in this preliminary stage as to, you know, and what, what group we're targeting. And I believe that we're leaning more towards, you know, the, the older demographic. Right now, we're, we've proposed two four-unit buildings, but it could possibly be two three-unit buildings. So it's, we're tossing it.
Okay. It is a unique site. I think this is probably a good use of this site instead of a commercial. Because if you try to put a retail plaza center on this odd-shaped lot, I think it's going to be a little tough between the building and the parking. So I don't have too many problems with this type of proposal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? There might be. Thank you, Eric. Ralph Jaworski?
No, I mean, I agree. I mean, it seems like it would work on that parcel. The only thing I would just want to open up, and it's more of a comment than anything. It's, this, in, in, it was mentioned earlier, this is an active area, right? And by putting residential in that spot, does it? Does it stop future active areas in this waterfront area, right? That we have designated this as a waterfront. Across the street is the waterfront with a lot of activity. You've got residential there. You mentioned older demographic, who are really not a fan of activity. So I'm just wondering if, you know, from the master plan, would we be stopping future active growth in a waterfront area? Bike paths along that side of the road? You know, bars or, you know, some other activities that promote the waterfront? That's, that's it. I mean, it's nothing against it of the parcel. The, what you've shown here does fit. I would agree, I would, before making a decision, I'd want to have a more firm definition of what would be going there, possibly conditional. But again, it's just a comment, that's all.
All right, thank you for your comments. James Klonowski?
Okay, yeah, I'm still pretty open-minded on it. The only thing, the sense that I'm getting in this is it looks like it's, they're trying to maximize the use of the property. And I'm not sure if that's what we intended with the MX District. So that's just my comments for now. And again, I'm still taking information in and processing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Brokhardt?
I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
So you're looking at two four-unit buildings. Did you consider any single-family residential?
Yes, I did.
What, what made you go in the other direction?
Better utilize the property.
Help me, help me understand that.
Well, it's, it's easily accessible to do for residential lots there. You have Jefferson, then, which is, there's quite a bit of traffic. So in and out of Jefferson becomes a bit of a headache for, for the buyers of those properties. We can alleviate that by coming in through the side streets versus from Jefferson.
I'm confused. Are you saying it's more difficult for four individual lots?
Yes.
Than it would be?
Right.
For eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you're entering the proposed plan through the side streets. You're entering through the back rather than through the front on Jefferson.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mark Renaud?
Actually, just, just one quick question. I think you already answered it in your previous statement. Are you just looking to build and sell these? Or are they, are you trying to turn these into rental units? Out of curiosity.
Well, my wife would like to move in. She wants a downsize. I'm one of those older people that wants a downsize, too.
Well, you're looking to build and sell these?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir, you might want to stay up because there might be other questions for you. Unless you want to get some exercise, it's up to you. Brian Carr?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't have any questions really for the applicant, because it's pretty self-explanatory what he's trying to do. I guess more, I just have comments, you know, based on some of the feedback from the other board members. And, you know, when we did the master plan, I think all of our hopes was to try to utilize some of the commercial properties on Jefferson. But I think we've all seen that we've been on, you know, for us to have been on the board long enough that none of those properties seem to sell for commercial uses. If you recall, a lot of people keep coming in there and want to convert those commercial properties to residenials. We have turned some of them down, like the ones that are a little farther, I call, south of that area. Maybe it's considered west, depending on your viewpoint. I also think the challenge is our waterfront district. Our vision for the waterfront district isn't what it currently actually is, right? Our waterfront district, the master plan was established for hope, something that, you know, 20, 30 years, I, Brian myself, would be dead by the time it ever actually came about, right? You would still be here, yes. Probably still chairing this board. I would be retired for sure by then. But I think we all had a lot, you know, we all do have a lot of hopes, because we love this community and we hope that the waterfront district would become what it potentially can be. The problem is that right now, it's more of a dump. And so, and then with the failure of a lot of the commercial properties along Jefferson, because the majority of the properties are residential on Jefferson, I think that, my only comment to all this is I agree with, you know, that it is an odd-shaped lot. So there's not a lot of function, really, that can go there. I mean, he, he can build for, you know, the, the single families. But, I mean, this, this lot technically is surrounded by residenials. I'm not trying to advocate for him. I'm just trying to, you know, spark the thoughts from everybody, because we've, again, for all of us that have been in the township a long time and been on these boards, you know, I mean, we all, when we all did this master plan, we had a lot of hopes, and I think we all still have that hope with the hamlets. That's what, that's what prompted the mixed uses. And, you know, the waterfront district for it to be walkable, and shops, and all these great things. But I think we have what we have. And so, I, I'm not against, you know, if it's tastefully done. Obviously, we, we're not looking at whether it's tastefully done yet. That'd be site plan approval, but we can hope. But I just think the challenge with the commercial properties is we haven't had a lot of success doing it. And I'm not quite sure if even the commercial properties, because it's across from the street and actually quite a bit away from the actual waterfront, I, I, I don't know what would really go there that would promote that walkable district, because now you're crossing a busy street that people go 55 miles an hour down. Where if it was on the other side, on the waterfront side, you're starting to create that community. If somebody did come in there, tear down some of those old, ugly storage, boat storage areas, and started building like a little community like we want, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Rick LaBelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment, I guess a question as well is, first, I'd like to start with my comment. We're here tonight to discuss going from C1, correct? C1 to MX2? MX1? That's what we're here for tonight. We're not, we're not here to discuss, at least in my opinion, we're not here to discuss what the gentleman's going to build. We're here to discuss what is happening, his opportunity to do what he can on the MX1 zoning, in this, in the MX1 zoning, which he can do the residential if he chooses to. My question is, is if, if in fact you are planning on doing a residential development, why not go with a multifamily zoning rather than the MX1 zoning? That would be my first question. And and secondly, my next question is, is now we've got, we're changing this one piece of property. They're requesting to change this one piece of property from C1 to MX1. Would that, would that be considered spot zoning? Because there isn't any MX1 in that area. The only other MX1 we have is closer to 21 Mile Road. It's not down the street. We're not, we're not grouping the MX1 together. And that was our vision, as you said, is to have, is to have, you know, a district, a community. Doesn't mean that they can't build forward with this, sure. But anyways, back to my question is, why not just rezon a residential, multifamily residential? If in fact that is your vision?
It was, it was recommended that my, this is the route that I should take. It was recommended that this is the route I should take, so that's.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I just have a comment and a question. I, I agree that the, the lot's kind of an odd shape. As far as it tying into the Marina District, I can kind of go either way, whether it should be a business or something related to that, or if it's housing. I know that a lot of times boaters, if they can't live on the water, want to live very close to where they might keep their boat. So these units could be tied into the Marina District for that reason, that, you know, somebody has their boat there, but they're driving in from somewhere else. And this way, they would be right down the street, kind of kitty-corner. It is close to that whole Marina District. It's right across from the PGA Marine and right down that road. There's, so there's a lot of different things there. So it'd be close. So in, in that regard, I, I kind of So in, in that regard, I, I kind of see how it might tie in. I also agree with Mr. LaBelle of why not just rezonate for what it is and not go to the MX since it's kind of outside that area. So, but yeah, I'd be, I'd like to see, you know, I know we're not into the whole design and everything, but maybe anything that we do that's tied into the MX1 could have a little more of a Marina District type look to it, you know, stuff like that, that we can create this community. It starts from somewhere. So if this turns out that this is the first step, you know, we can deal with that later. But with that, if you have anything else you'd like to add.
Well, I've been scratching your ground here in Chesterfield since 2011. I've probably built about 20 houses. I think I'm pretty well-known through, you know, the building and water department. I enjoy working in the township. Matter of fact, I zero in on this. I'm a small builder. I just do a few houses a year. But you can see some of my work to corner Sugar Bush and Cotton. There's a row of four homes over on Jefferson next to the pump. What is that called? The pump station, you know, I did a four houses there in a row. Then other scattered houses throughout the township. So, you know, this is where I prefer to be. I'm just looking to stay and continue my, you know, career. Grocery money.
I just, the one question I had was, you said it was recommended to go this route. Did they say why to do that rather than just rezonate from one to?
I don't know how to answer that question. I don't know. I wasn't told why.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. I, I can speak to that a little bit. Mr. Mahoney did come in. He's been looking at this property for a while and has inquired several times. They did come in and meet with staff. And he did have three options. I believe it was three options. One with the single-family option, one with a multifamily zoning and one with the MX1. You know, all the options were explained to him and what that process would look like. We did feel it was best if he was going to go the multifamily route to come in under the MX1 because it is in the area in the master plan, whereas there is no multifamily either in the master plan or currently zoned there. So that would be more of a spot zoning. Sort of the question to a spot zone, because it's in the master plan, it's right in that area where it's MX1. I, I think the case could be made that it's not a spot zoning. But it was, it did come from staff that if he was going to propose multifamily, MX1 would be the best route to go for rezoning. And just to follow up on the, the site plan questions, as Mr. LaBelle had stated, this is just for the rezoning. If the planning commissioner recommends approval and the township board ultimately approves it, the applicant could decide to, to sell it, could decide to develop it as something else. I mean, there is some commercial uses that could be allowed in the MX1, could do single-family in the MX1. So there is all that to be considered, but this, we did feel this was the best route. If he was going to do a multifamily development, MX1 would be the most appropriate zoning district.
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question. Mr. Palin, in relationship to the single-family, since this is a two-lot scenario, would he have to split it to four lots? And would that lot meet all the requirements for a single-family in relationship to the property size and percentages?
Are you referring to how it's, how it's currently zoned?
Well, it's, well, we know it's currently zoned as two pieces of separate property.
So it's currently C1, which C1 allows you to do single-family as regulated in the nearest abutting single-family district. So he could develop it under R1B standards, which would then have to be split into the individual lots, meeting the R1B district requirements.
Offhand, would that meet that requirement if, just by the look of this?
I think they showed in the concept it could be done.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Kathy, did you want to jump back in or have anything or are you all set?
I'm all set. I had originally thought, I still think it's a good use, the proposed, what we had on the proposed use, that's not necessarily what it would end up being. And I support whatever we can do to help get that area developed. But we might want to also consider, again, just, I'm not making a motion at all, but if, if we, if the group thought that when this was laid out this way, we still want to try for some more commercial, then that would be a reason to not change it at this time. But I had, I don't have a strong opinion either way.
Thank you. We do have, we did get a letter sent to us this afternoon, a letter of opposition. Do you want me to read it or would you like to read it? The letter is from Felisa, Felicia Jackson. She lives at 32130 Riverpoint Street, Chesterfield. October 5th, 2025. To whom it may concern. I have lived at this Riverpoint Street address for 18 years, minding my own business. One day I woke up to a nightmare. About 100 trees around my property were taken down within two days. This left me wide open to drive-by traffic on Jefferson. In order to regain my privacy, I had to install an expensive fence. Now I find out the landowner is planning multifamily dwellings. The proposed eight, eight dwellings would bring noise and traffic levels way higher than what I am used to. For this reason, I would vote no on the proposed zoning change for the property adjacent to my property at 32130 Riverpoint. And that's from Felicia Jackson. So with that, you know, that's her right to express herself. Personally, I think having commercial traffic there, even though that might be an option, I, I don't know how soon that's going to come in. We've got some commercial projects like that there where there's one business open and the rest of them still, you know, waiting for tenants. In that area, you know, I've seen things over the years changed. They had a restaurant there for a while and it turned into condominiums. And you could go by boat. So there, there's opportunities. They're just not in front of us right now. So personally, because of the odd shape of the lot and, you know, having additional places for people to live close to the Marina might not be a bad idea. So did you have anything else at this time or?
Well, just thank the board for their time. Tigers are out. I guess everybody would like to get home.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the board here for a motion. Okay, we can do that. So let's, I'll make a motion to, last time I did this, is it postpone? Make a motion to postpone this to an agenda in, do we want to date specific or? So within the next couple, okay. We'll just, do I make a motion on this?
Isn't, isn't it just our normal procedure to wait two weeks after these? It's, it's normal. You wait two weeks and then get a motion.
We'll just wait two weeks then and put it on the next agenda for an actual motion. Everybody's okay with that? That's where we're at. Thank you. Regular agenda, we have nothing on that. Presentations, reports and discussions. So on the agenda tonight, we've been having some, we had a, a small committee. We've been meeting to discuss building materials and we're almost there. We've got a little more tweaking to do on it. So with that, I'd like to bring it up to the board and see if anybody has any questions. Okay, Stephanie, I guess we're going to have you do a little presentation on it.
Great, thank you. And you don't have to turn, look if it's uncomfortable, but so as, it's odd configuration here. And I can only see some of you, sorry. We're getting used to the new space. So as Mr. Leonard noted, there's been a committee that's been working on building material updates. You have a section in your ordinance currently that specifies some things about building materials. But really, we, we know that the current standards don't always provide enough direction to applicants. And then when applicants come to talk to staff about what can and can't be done, staff really have a hard time providing some solid direction for the applicants. So that was the main purpose for updating this ordinance. Some key changes in here. We did reorganize some of the content, added some labels to things that was kind of just administrative. The more substantial items that we've noted here, we've provided a list of approved materials. That list is provided outside of the ordinance. So whenever the planning commission wants to update that list, it does not have to go through the normal text amendment process. So the planning commission may choose to update that, you know, review the list once a year or, or not, or more frequently and update it. But it doesn't require a big text amendment to update that list. We also have changed the text so that all facades, not just the front facade, has to meet certain building material requirements. We have also added a 36-inch high-impact barrier on all of the facades. And I will note that I know the planning commission appreciated being able to review the building materials and, and provide their input on those. These changes do still allow for the planning commission's discretion on materials that are not include, included in the approved building material schedule. So if an applicant comes to the planning commission proposing materials that are not on that list or that exceed the percentage that is on that list, they can still propose that and the planning commission can then consider whether or not that's acceptable. The information or the changes also includes what information applicant is suggested to provide to the planning commission for their consideration. The committee did meet briefly before this meeting and discussed some of the, the questions that we had at the bottom of the memo. I will note that one of the questions referred to canopies and awnings, about whether or not that needed to come back to the planning commission for consideration if they are to be altered. Jonathan confirmed that the staff is confident that they could approve those administratively if you wanted to make that change. And yes, there are other questions that you may wish to discuss. Uh-oh.
Okay, I assume you're all set then, Stephanie. Bring it back to the board here. If anybody has any questions, I'll start with Kathy down there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question about, I think it's a good idea. I like the, putting the list separate from the document so that it's easy access and easier to change. The language in paragraph F, I believe, yes, says, on page two, says that the file, specifications on file in the planning and zoning department, which may be updated from time to time. I think it would be, I don't know if it has to be in this document, but as a practice, that should be something that's also available on the website or any other place where they can digit, you know, apply for and get information about. And then the document, it would also be helpful for them to know if the document they're looking at is the most recent one. And that the applicant can be assured that that is the most recent one. Or some type of note to the applicant or somebody considering it to, for them to verify. Leave it their responsibility to make sure it's the, the most recent list, but somehow indicate to them that they need to work from the most recent list. That's all I have on that point.
Thank you. Eric Hyder. Thank you. Ralph Chorsky. James Klonowski.
On this, on the table, 5.4, point D, point 3, point A, the building material composition for the facades of the buildings. Minimum area of brick 75%. Now is that flexible or is that, is that, and say brick? I, I assume that kind of limits your, your options, right? Is that, am I interpreting that wrong? I just.
No, you're interpreting that correctly. So that is not all that different from your current standard. That required a minimum of, of 90% brick or similar decorative or durable material is determined by the planning commission. And that was for the commercial or office zoning districts.
Thank you. Mr. Brokert.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Renaud.
Just real quick, just to follow up on the previous question. When it says the 75% minimum area of brick, is that brick or bricks? Or adjacent to brick, like the Nietzsche house and whatnot, is that acceptable as well? And then my other question was, and this was just, this is a matter of inquiry. Why the 75% on the regular building and then notice on the waterfront just says minimum area 15%? Did we just, did we come up with those numbers ourselves or reasoning behind it? I was just curious.
Does anybody want to address that?
I can't address it. Mark, what we did is we looked at the, the amount of brick. You know, when we say brick or, you know, a similar material, something other than brick, but in that, in that line. But then when we looked at the percentages, we lowered the percentages from 90 down to 75% to allow for more versatile, more allowing different kinds of materials that have come into play since that original ordinance was set. That's why we lowered it. Now, as far as the waterfront, that was something that, that we had talked about because in the waterfront, you typically have a, a different kind of structure, architectural structure that doesn't always have brick on it. It has a lot of clapboard. It has a lot of, you know, different accents that you wouldn't normally see on a commercial building or on a, you know, in a residential atmosphere. That was the reason we went down to the lower, the lower amounts. Now, this is all open for discussion, obviously. And if you feel that the, the percentages need to go one way or the other, you know, that's just something that, that we had written down to start the conversation at this point. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, no, it did. I was, I was actually just curious. I was all, just wondering, but I, actually, I, I love the adjustments, actually. I love having the separate list of materials. I think it'll make it much easier for everyone. It's just in the one box, it says, just above the 75%, it just says brick. It doesn't say brick or the other material. So I just think we should clarify that is all.
So would you recommend that we put in like some kind of a cultured stone or?
Yeah, just, it just, when, if I'm looking at, if I'm a developer and I'm just looking at that table, it just has the word brick. It doesn't, it makes me think I have no alternatives is all. So either clarify it right there, because the list of materials is, it's very explicit what you can do there.
So original ordinance said brick or better.
Right, exactly.
And that's where it came from. I guess it's the time to talk about it is if in fact we want to go to, open it up to the other, the other cement products.
So the, so if you call, it is brick only, the 75%. The other 25% could be the other stuff. That was the idea behind it. But that's why it's only on the front facade. If you look on the other three facades, it reverses. And you only need 25% brick. And mostly what we're talking about there is really just the low wainscoting with the brick because of the durability nature that we're trying to make sure that are inherently. that are inherently integrated into the new buildings that are being built within the township. So from a quality perspective, they're durable from a longer period of time and resistant to damage and/or, you know, weathering facade, you know, that whole, that whole issue, right? So that was the idea behind it. But again, like Mr. LaBelle said, I mean, we're, I mean, it's, we're flexible, but that was the idea behind it, was 75% on the front, make it masonry in the, you know, the high-use, high-function areas, again, commercial. And that's why we reversed it in the, because we want to create some aesthetic flexibility for the nautical area that we're trying to create. You know, again, if we ever do and ever can get investors that will come in and do that, that would be ideal, right? Is to make sure that those stand out from an aesthetic perspective. So that was the idea.
Nope, nope, I like it, actually. I think you guys did a really good job. I appreciate the effort.
Thank you. Mr. LaBelle, do you have anything else?
One last thing that was just briefly just mentioned by Mr. Carr, is when we talk about the other sides of the building, bringing up masonry up the wall, we have it currently, with our proposal, we have it at 36 inches. Is that enough? Do you think we need to go up to four feet? Do we need to go up to five feet? Certainly open for discussion. We put 36 inches up there because we figured that a grocery cart isn't even taller than 36 inches. You know, Johnny with a snow shovel isn't going to reach higher than 36 inches. You know, things of that nature. If you feel it needs to come up higher, we can. We certainly can. It's open for discussion. This isn't, this isn't ready for presentation for public hearing yet. There's still, there's a few more revisions that has to go into this. And, you know, please bring them up tonight so that Giffords Webster can add it to their, to their notes here.
Thank you. The chair doesn't have anything to add right now. Does anybody else have anything, or are we good?
Kathy. I do, a couple other things that came as a result of the discussions. I think it was stated, let's see, on page? These aren't numbered, but the specifications of material types, that's the last page. It says that they can be administratively approved. I think that was mentioned earlier, that the department feels they can do that. And that, I agree with that, they can. There's another place where if somebody wants to make a change in the materials, it has to come to the board. Is that the intent, that if a change, it would still have to come to us, and that couldn't be an administrative decision?
I think so. I think that should be, if they, if they're gonna, if we approve one material that's, you know, brick at 80%, and they want to come back after the fact and go down to 65%, well, that doesn't make the ordinance. I think it would have to come back to us to make that decision.
I thought this was, if they're making it...
If they make the change, I don't think...
I thought it was, I thought it was in reference to if they're improving their building or remodeling the building. I might have misunderstood that part.
I think you might be referring to section B on the proposed language under alterations.
Yep, that's it, on page, yeah, letter E on...
B, as in boy.
B? Okay, I'm looking at E is where, is the black language alteration.
Oh, yep, yeah, so if you look at the red line, it is E. What I was referring to in particular was that previously, if there were alterations to awnings and canopies, that had to get planning commission review and approval. But that staff felt that they could manage and were confident in being able to follow the standards for those alterations for awnings and canopies. So we suggested removing that.
Oh, you did, that's what the black means?
No, sorry. We, it was suggested at the meeting 30 minutes prior to this one. So it's not in the document.
So it's already been taken care of.
Yes.
All right, all right. Thank you. And then someone brought this up to the use of the word "brick." I think the bricks, I did check, there's 13 uses of brick in that document. I just want to make sure they all mean the same, mean the same thing. So that there's not a confusion, because we're allowing some alternative. I ran out of time, I used up my three minutes, sorry about that. Yeah, it's a three-minute timer. Just, again, I think it's helpful, when they go through the entire process, they'll learn what building projects, products to use. But if you're just doing a brief thing going through, I think it's nice to have consistency in that, in the use of the words, so that when they just decide to make an application and select their materials, that they're not looking at another part where it says something different than what they understood. That's all. Just be consistent. Thank you.
I did have something that just came up, that I was thinking about. There's been some, see if anybody's got an opinion on this. We're saying that 75% brick or stone. I think we also said that glass would be considered durable enough if it was a lot of glass. Is there anything else that we want to, because we've had some situations where we haven't had 75% brick or stone on the front facade? You know, there's the plastic panels, and there's different powder-coated metal panels and that. Does any of that need to come back in for discussion so that we're not just tightening that to the point where the artistic part of, when the architects are designing, that they have a little flexibility? Or are we just going to have all brick, glass, and stone on the front, and that's it? Because I know we've had some other businesses that they've alternated some of the products in place of brick. Any thoughts on that, from anybody?
Well, in my opinion, is that we set forth what we've proposed, and if in fact, if in fact, an applicant comes in with an unusual situation or something that is unique to their, to their project, then we have the opportunity to make changes, just as we've done in the past. That's my, that's the way that I would conceive, or what I would think would be appropriate.
Does that open the door, then, that everybody can come in and ask for that? Are you saying that we, if we get it proposed and we think it's a good idea based on a particular application, that we alter this a little bit for others as well? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I think it comes to a unique situation per, per building. Just like 123 signs came in off of Town Center with the precast concrete panels. That was the whole building, because that's almost a million-square-foot building. So having brick on a million-square-foot building would be a little odd for an industrial-type scenario. So he came in with, you know, the panel, and I think we approved it. Yeah, I understand that. But if that came in today, I think, you know, by him coming, it's a unique situation because of the type of building that is in relationship. I think we take each individual applicant, if they're proposing something over and above what, what our ordinance is, like, like that. That's a unique situation. So I think if we take case by case when it comes to us, I think that'd be a little more open to it.
Yeah, it may not come up that often. I mean, they're having cases that sometimes they've got a certain look, a brand, that they're carrying, you know, throughout the country, and that they want to continue that, where it's not all brick. Yeah, it might be, okay. Well, that's, nobody else has anything else, well, sure.
Yeah, on the, it's kind of a question, you say you, you want to have three-foot minimum brick on the bottom, correct? On your... Yes, masonry. But then, in the other part of the ordinance, you say you want 75% brick on the facing, the street side. Well, if you have only three feet, obviously, you're less than, I think you would be less than 75%. You see that? Does that include, okay.
Well, it's mostly for the other side of buildings where, where...
We do the, we say 25% minimum masonry, and we're telling them that they got to use 25% for building, for the two sides in the back, and it's got to be a minimum of three foot high. That's where the three foot comes in. Not so much the front, because the front's going to be 75% brick. Yeah. Yeah, and so say they come in, and it's 75% brick. The reason why, again, it's minimum three foot on all four sides is because we don't want them to come in and just do a, you know, say they, aesthetically, they want to do, you know, some cool detail in the corner that comes all the way down to the, you know, to the, to the walkway, right? Or to the, you know what I mean? We want to make sure that they got a three foot. And then, of course, they can go higher in the front to achieve their 75%. But we just want to make sure they don't have any accents, and be like, oh, I'm taking, you know, because, you know, aesthetically, they can, they can manipulate that. So we're saying 75%, minimum of three foot, no matter what, with masonry. Because the balance of that could be all glass, because it could be an all-glass structure, so that would kind of be equal to that, you know, with the three foot.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, thank you. So what we'll do is, are we going to revise the list and come back with another list at the next meeting? And then at some point, agree to have it go to a public hearing?
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to bring back another draft. If you want to have a chance to review it one more time before the public hearing, that's fine. If you would like to set a public hearing for it now, it's up to your discretion.
I kind of think if we set the public hearing, and there's a couple things that we're still tweaking on it, it might be better to just keep it clean, to have one more bite at the apple. We all agree that we're good with it, and then go right into a public hearing from there? I think that would be okay, if everybody's good with that?
Yes.
All right. We have planning commissioners' comments. Everybody's got three minutes. Kathy, we'll start with you.
I'm good, thank you.
Eric? Ralph? James? Rich?
Couple things, I'll make it quick. Tonight's meeting was really, really interesting. First off, the guys and gals who worked on the building materials, you guys did a really good job. I appreciate the work. And you can tell just how much work you put in, so thank you for that. But what I found really interesting was the separation between the requirements in the waterfront district and everywhere else. So I'll go back and I'll reread the master plan in this area, but it seems to me like we want a waterfront district to be special, to maybe be a part of this community that stands out. And we've had bad luck so far, in my estimation, getting what we want there. So perhaps a challenge we'll be facing sooner rather than later is, what do we want that waterfront district to be? I don't think anyone's real happy with it, but I love the fact that you separated the requirements for building materials in that district for more flexibility, to give it a different look, a different, a different feel, which I completely support. If we aren't getting what we want from the public, maybe we should make it more attractive for developers in that area to fulfill the vision of this master plan. And I can't speak by memory of what it says, so I'll go back and look at it again. But that's what was so interesting tonight for me. And again, you guys did a great job, so thank you for that. Just my thoughts, thanks.
Thank you. Mark?
Oh, just good job. Thanks for the work you guys did, I really, I'd like to run it out there. Can't wait to see the finished product.
Thank you. Brian?
Nothing, I'm good.
Eric?
Of course I do.
Is this automatically self-tamed?
It is. The gentleman in the audience was, made a comment this evening when he spoke. And thank you for getting up. We really do appreciate the public coming and talking to us, and giving us their feelings. You made a comment about how you felt that everything was kind of backwards. Hopefully, I answered that question, is, is the gentleman was coming to us tonight with a zoning change only, going from C1 to the MX1, which allows him to build anything that's allowed in the MX1 criteria. We shouldn't and don't consider what he had proposed as far as the residential. If in fact, he does come in front of us at that time, and he does, or he feels that he wants to go residential, he has to give us a site plan. There has to be a site plan review, which is a completely different meeting with us, with elevations of the buildings and what have you. So that's the reason that we do it the way that we do, is so that, first of all, in this instance, he's wanting to change the zoning. And he has to go through that process prior to giving us his proposal of what he wants to put there. He doesn't have to put residential there. He can put whatever he wants in the MX1 district. So hopefully that answered your question, because I didn't want to leave you hanging that, that, you know, that we didn't explain why we do what we do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I only have one thing I want to talk about. I brought it up a couple times, and I really appreciate that we have a biking path committee working on this. But I just, I went out to Iowa for a week and a half to visit my son, and gotten into biking a lot more the last few years, going further distances and going more often because of the pedal-assist e-bikes. It's been a lot more fun, and go further, and if you get a little tired going up a hill or coming back, you have that little extra help. But I started thinking, they must have planned their bike paths in Iowa for decades, because they have bike paths that go, like, we have from us to New Baltimore. They have it from Davenport along the Mississippi, and it goes along golf courses, schools, residents, so neighborhoods, all kinds of stuff. And the one thing I noticed is, when we were riding, and we rode 12 miles one day, not long ways, but it was, it was good enough. I noticed a lot of people coming in from, as we were on the main bike path, people coming in from the subdivisions, riding their bikes on and off, people walking along there, different ages, younger, older, the hardcore bikers with the, you know, the skin-tight uniform and, you know, head down, just really into it. And I started thinking about what's going on with our youth right now. I saw a survey that 52% of the time that young persons on, on their phone, 52% of the time. And I know that a lot of parents that have kids that are on phones wish that they would go out and do stuff outside. I hear it all the time, why don't you go outside and do stuff with your friends? Because everybody's on video games and everything else. And it's not, probably not healthy. So I think the bike path is really important to get the kids back outside, if they have places to go. Right now, you come out of your subdivision, which might not have sidewalks if it's an older sub, and there's nowhere to go. You're on Jefferson, you're on 21 Mall, Cotton, you know, the different areas. For the older folks, there's a lot more, if you, if you follow at all any part of the e-bike industry, just in the last three or four years that I've been interested in it, I've seen all kinds of companies come out. They're coming out with more products, different everything, and drawing more older people into it. Not that I'm old, but I'm not what I was 10 years ago, so I really appreciate the e-bike part. So the point I'm trying to make is, all the efforts going into extending bike paths and different things and walking paths, if there's any way to focus more, I know it's more expensive and a little harder to do, but I think it would benefit the township as a whole by having the main roads, being able to access them, to get onto a main road, let's say Jefferson. And you come out in Jefferson, and you can hit the bike path that's up by Brandonburg. You can go into New Baltimore, or maybe somewhere around with Cotton Road, just to be able to maneuver around. We've just started really focusing on this, and like I said, in Iowa, it's had to been decades, because this stuff is integrated into all the communities. And you're just going from one place to the next, there's restaurants. It was really cool. We had a really good time, and we, if we weren't playing golf, we were bike riding. And so if I could make any kind of suggestion of hope, is maybe we could focus more on making it accessible for more people if we could have the subdivisions have somewhere to go without loading the bike on a bike rack. And the last thing is, and I'm not sure how the community would go along with this, but community with kids and older folks and everybody else, maybe there's some kind of a, something that could be a part of a tax-type ask to go into... a, something that could be a part of a tax-type ask, to go into doing this without waiting for grants, and, you know, maybe the big grants take longer, they're not available. So that's all I have. It's just to promote the whole biking thing, and making it accessible as quickly as possible to as many people in the community as possible. I think the young folks and the older folks that might do this, there'd be a lot more reason to do it. That's it. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:11.
Support.
Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Mark Renaud, to adjourn the meeting. Tonight's...